One, as a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county's YouTube page. It is now 3:07 PM. Calling the role, Mr. Schron. Mr. Schron is absent at the moment. Ms. Conwell is absent at the moment. Ms. Turner?
Present.
Ms. Stevens is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Present.
Mr. Byrne?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher? He's absent at the moment. Council President Jones?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Andrea. This time, has anyone signed in for public comment?
No public comment has been received.
Would you speak to the item referred to committee?
Oh, Council President, Councilmember Schron is in attendance. Okay. First, I would like to state that items A through I were introduced at the November 26 council meeting and referred to this committee. If there are no objections, the items will refer out of committee with the recommendation of passage to the full council under second reading suspension rule 9D. First item? Resolution 2024-0437 approving the Metro Health Systems policies and procedures to participate in one or more joint purchasing associations for the purpose of acquiring supplies, equipment, and services provided through joint purchasing arrangements to achieve beneficial purchasing arrangements for the year 2025 in accordance with Ohio Vice Code Section 339.05.
All right, well, first let the record reflect that Councilman Schron is in attendance. Is there someone to speak to this matter?
Good afternoon, President Jones, members of council. I'm Joe Froelich for Metro Health, and since we probably want real answers, I've brought our interim vice president of supply chain who can speak to our purchasing and procurement policies.
Excellent, all right. Please state your name.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Carol Martz, and here to request approval for our annual approval for the GPO participation as required by the state.
All right. Many moons ago, I was chair of Health and Human Services, and we saw this item quite regularly, so we certainly understand your need and the purpose. So with that, if there are no questions from council? I ask for a motion to refer this item to the full council agenda with the recommendation for passage under second reading suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved by Councilman Miller. Who wants to claim that second?
Councilwoman Turner.
Councilwoman Meredith Turner, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-0438 awarding a community development grant award in the amount not to exceed $1,300,000 to Cleveland Public Market Corporation for the restoration and modernization of the West Side Market located at 1979 West 25th Street, City of Cleveland.
Again, is there someone to speak to this matter?
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Gallagher is in attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. My name is Dave Abbott, I'm the president of the board of the new Cleveland Public Market Corporation, and with me is Rosemary Mudry, our executive director. I'll turn it over to Rosemary in just a second, but on behalf of the board, I want to first of all thank you, of course, for having us here and for letting us make our presentation on the market and to ask for your support. And frankly, we need your support in order to do the tasks that we have before us. I'm sure you're all familiar with the market to one degree or another, and I hope you recognize it as one of the great institutions in our community, in our entire region, really. And as good as it is, it's also been an underperforming asset for the region, and that's where we come in. The Cleveland Public Market Corporation has the charge to not just improve the market, but really to transform it in some key ways so that we can live up to the mission that we have of preserving the tradition of the market, but also taking the food access system in our community into the future in a far more diverse, equitable, and accessible way. And we can do that by implementing the master plan that we have completed and that Rosemary will describe, but not just with the capital improvements that are necessary, but also by making the market a force for food access, for education, for entrepreneurship, in ways that previously had never been imagined that that would be the task or the job of a market. But when we're done, and with your support, we will be done, and we will make the market not just a better place for this community, but really the best public market in America. That's our goal, to make it the best. So with that, let me just turn it over to Rosemary, our executive director, who has been with a small staff, working extremely hard, actually managing the market under an agreement with the city since late April, and that's half of the task. The other task is to implement the master plan, so, Rosemary, take it away.
If you would state your full name for us.
Rosemary Mudry, executive director, Cleveland Public Market Corporation. I think we had a PowerPoint that we had sent in, just so there were some images. Is that something I should control, or somebody else is behind the scenes doing that?
The big green button advances, the small red one goes back.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, I think Dave gave a terrific introduction, and I mean, a major reason why we're here today is due to his leadership and our board's leadership in working behind the scenes to get us to this point. So I'm really pleased to be here discussing the project with you, and your support is going to help make this transformational project a reality. So just, you know, talking about the existing market, we've got 65 small businesses, 250 jobs, we've got over 800,000 annual visitors per year, and we have the highest redemption rate of produce perks, which is a program through, for EBT and through TANF and things like that, that provide produce coupons to residents of low and moderate income in order to access fresh and healthy produce. And we have the highest redemption rate through some of these early programs of any place in the state. And so just really want to emphasize that, you know, this already is a place that's serving folks in need and providing fresh food access, but as Dave mentioned, it's going to really be transformative, the amount we can extend that impact. Oops, it's going backwards. So the reason we're here today is the master plan. The master plan has a few key goals. One, restoring the infrastructure, bringing it into the 21st century, making sure it's a place where those 65 small businesses can thrive, but also where it's a place where we can fill the vacancies, diversify, and really bring in a whole slew of new businesses who reflect the full community and the full diversity of Northeast Ohio. The other piece of that is what Dave touched on, really expanding the community impact. So the market is not just a place where people come, but we leverage everything that we're doing to maximize the impact on entrepreneurship, maximize the impact on others in the community, and ensure that we are creating long-term accessibility for folks. And then the other piece is, you know, we need to, for it to maintain itself as an economic driver in the region, it has to be able to continue to attract and compete with other places that provide food. And so really providing an enhanced market experience that attracts customers both locally, especially from across the county, and also from outside the county as a tourist attraction is really critical. And so addressing those customer needs, helping us be more competitive with the markets you may have visited across the nation that really keep people there, that provide seating so you don't have to eat your hot dog over a trash can. Those are things that people really want and need. And the final piece is, we need to have a sustainable business model. For the market to be able to survive another 100 years, we have to have a diversified revenue stream. And this project has, you know, physical transformation, but part of that physical transformation is providing opportunities to have a business and operating model that's transformed into a sustainable operation. This is a photo of the basement, which is going to undergo a gut renovation, which is critical to supporting small businesses. These coolers have been here since the 1950s. They need, they need some updating to be able to compete in the 21st century. We have a lot of butchers and other folks who are nearing retirement. They have to be able to find folks who can replace them in those trades, and we have to be able to attract the next generation of business owners who can operate in a comfortable space that fulfills, you know, their modern needs. The produce arcades will see a refresh as well. The East Arcade, which is mostly vacant right now, will get fully renovated to become the new home of all of the produce. We are very lucky to have held on to as much produce as we have compared to many markets in America, but really revitalizing this, providing HVAC, providing things that allow them to compete and allow this to be a business that people want to keep running because, because it's not so hard. You know, right now, it's so hard to operate there, and we want to make it a space where people both feel welcomed as customers, but also businesses feel like they are set up for success. And so this East Arcade becomes a space where we're really able to deepen our impact and retain that authentic, fresh food produce. The North Arcade, which is the stretch that hits West 25th, that arcade will get renovated and become a prepared foods hall. This is a really critical piece of the project to diversifying and being able to attract new entrepreneurs and new small businesses. This, this is an area where we constantly get requests by small businesses, particularly minority businesses, who have ideas about what they'd want to do in the market that require infrastructure that we cannot provide in the market hall. And so this becomes a place where we can provide hoods, we can provide ventilation, and where people can do prepared foods and things like that that reflect the modern and growing demand for that industry. It also provides a critical revenue stream. The rents from that will supplement a lot of the fresh food rents and allow us to help become more sustainable in our business model. This is a spot we lovingly call Trash Alley. This is where you may have eaten your hot dog on a bench next to a pigeon, or, you know, tried to drink a hot cocoa in the freezing cold, but this gets transformed into a place where people can actually sit, they can actually enjoy the market. It also provides a revenue stream and opportunity for programming. We can hold events, we can do things. Right now, when we do those produce perks, people have to line up, wrap around the building. This becomes a place where we can have that kind of programming and really serve the community. It also provides some connection points between the produce arcades and the market. If you've ever been down to the market in the winter, you know it can be awfully painful to have to go outside and inside, pressing buttons for multiple doors and things like that, carrying all your goods. And so things like this are included in the master plan, which really address that handicap accessibility and those kinds of issues for, you know, everyone from ages zero to 100. This is the former women's locker room, and it will become the market's kitchen. This is a really critical component to being able to broaden our reach in the community. There's thousands of school kids that come through the market every year, and right now, they kind of just get let loose. And this provides us the opportunity to really do intentional teaching around nutrition education. It allows us to have partnerships with culinary programs and other things like that, and help really launch the next generation of healthy eating, teaching people how to eat well, and as well as teaching them how to use that produce that they're getting in the produce arcade. And when they buy a bargain flat of raspberries, they learn how to can it and extend that life and be able to shop at a reasonable price. Finally, the former men's locker room, which is behind the flag, becomes an event space with a balcony that extends out front, which allows us to bring elevators up to the space, again, ensuring that there's accessibility to the space. And this provides both a huge revenue opportunity in terms of holding events and things like that, but it also is then a space where we can do a lot of community-based programming and make sure we're maximizing our mission impact. The economic impact of this project, one, is that increased access to healthy and fresh food, our ability to, you know, really be a part of the broader Northeast Ohio entrepreneurship and food ecosystem. Two, creating close to 150 new jobs. And three, being able to create a $480 million economic impact over 10 years. In addition, it would also increase sales tax revenue, which would directly go back to county. So a little bit about funding the master plan. We have been tapping everyone we can. We, you know, as Dave alluded, I came on board in January, my team came on board in April. We have been really working hard to get where we are today. The project is $68 million. We are looking to fund $47 million by the end of the year, and this funding threshold, this stage one, allows us to really capitalize and maximize New Markets Tax Credits, which have changed their criteria. And so we can only, we can only receive allocation that's current allocation, we can't receive future allocation. So that's why it's sort of do or die here with New Markets Tax Credits. We have to be able to close on this round of allocation and secure current allocation because we won't qualify in the future. And so reaching this milestone has been really critical, and the county's support in helping us reach this milestone by the end of the year is, you know, a tremendous support, and we're very grateful for this opportunity to be here today. So as you can see, we've tapped into all levels of government, city government, state government, brownfield dollars. We are deep into our community investment as well. The Gun Foundation has, you know, made a leading gift for us, and we're, you know, engaging in the next stage, which will really have a lot more community investment. But I think being able to see how supportive every level of government is to this project really allows us to leverage that additional community support to say, everybody is all in on the market. Everybody really recognizes the regional impact of the market and care about it. And so, you know, when we go back to raise that additional 21 million to get to 68, your support is really critical for that as well, in helping show the community how important this project is to everyone. So we're, again, we're so grateful to be here and grateful for your support and looking forward to continuing the relationship. Thank you. Are there questions for me?
Are there any questions from council?
This looks a lot like a business model that you see in other places called Italia, and I'm sure you probably have heard it. It looks and feels a lot like that, which obviously Torino was the very first one for those in the world, and I've seen it modeled in New York City and modeled here. Is there any tone that we're trying to, we're trying to pick up those kind of ways in which you make it into a restaurant, you make it into a food service, you make it into a wine bar, you make it into a food court, all, and food pickup? It's got that feel that's different than what the market has always looked like, in my opinion.
Yeah, so I think that's a great question. So I think the model is to take a little bit of those pieces of the Italys and things like that, which are really sort of what some of the modern customers demand and how you continue to track new customers in a new demographic. But I think the goal here is, you know, as you saw in this plan, I didn't talk a lot about the market hall, and we're also renovating the produce arcade. So really, the goal of this master plan was to ensure we're preserving that fresh food tradition of the market in the market hall with the produce arcade, but thinking about how do we preserve that fresh food tradition, that authenticity, and add the experiences and things like that to make and things like that to make it a competitive space that can compete with the Italys and Van Aken districts and things like that.
Well, the Italia, which is, again, where, where it started was over in Torino, it did not eliminate the, the fresh food. It, it just provided another restaurant venue that became almost collegial.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I think that's the goal in the North Arcade, to have that, have that prepared foods and have those small vendor stands where people are getting that more restaurant experience. There's two bars in there, so they will be able to get alcohol on site, and there'll be about 300 seats integrated throughout, right? So that you can have your full suite of experience. You can go shopping, you can buy your good, like, have breakfast or brunch from the spot there, and then you can go do your shopping, you can go to your butcher, you can go to your produce arcade and bring it home to cook at home later.
And how about parking? I didn't hear you talk about parking.
So we, we now manage the parking lots associated with the West Side Market.
So the people are, they, they should be coming there to shop as opposed to going to someplace else as a venue, or not?
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal is to preserve it as Cleveland's grocery store, right? But to also recognize that, you know, people are most likely passing multiple grocery stores. So what is the experience we're delivering in addition to being a grocery store that makes them come down to the market?
Will they be incentivized to come there and shop with parking vouchers or anything of that nature? Is that, is that the model at all, or not?
No, incentivized with parking vouchers is not the model. Parking revenue is an important piece of the model for the market operation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Thank you, but my question was about the parking, and Councilman Schron already covered that, so I appreciate it.
I, I do want to clarify. So the first hour is free for shopping, and then on Mondays and Wednesdays, two hours are free. So there is an incentive, and the idea is to, folks who are coming truly to grocery shop, they should be able to shop in an hour and do free shopping, but folks who are coming and then going to restaurants and other things and staying, the idea is that you should generate income off of that to help support the market. There's no, there's no world in which the, the fresh food vendors can pay enough rent to sustain the West Side Market.
Thank you, appreciate that power. If you think you can go grocery shopping in an hour, you've never shopped with Mrs. Kelly before.
I'm a power shopper, so it's like 30 minutes for me.
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and to Mr. Mudri, Ms. Mudri. If you could tell me about what the process is from here going forward. When do you apply for the New Markets Tax Credits? What has to be in place as part of that application, and when do you expect to get a response?
So we are in negotiations for New Markets Tax Credits. It's less of a, like, one-stop application, and it's about securing both an investor and somebody who holds that, that allocation. And so we're in conversation with CDA, a local, a local firm within, with allocation. And so we are looking for a commitment letter from them. And so part of what will help us get that commitment letter is showing that we've made the promised progress on our fundraising goals. And then the other piece of that is advancing architecture and engineering towards construction drawings and things like that. And so that's the other side that we've also been hustling on, and we're, we're on progress for that, and they're, they're pleased with our progress. And so we're, we're, we're en route to being able to get, to make the strides that we need to on both sides.
And is there any deadline time by which these things have to be accomplished?
Yes, so essentially, we have to secure an investor and secure a commitment letter in order to be able to close on these tax credits in the first quarter of 2025, or else we lose the opportunity for New Markets Tax Credits allocation altogether.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Stevens.
What is your total project cost?
68 million. So the first stage, which will allow us to close on tax credits, is 47 million. And so that's what we're closing in on this year, and that the county's support will help us hit that threshold of 47 million, which is, is the, the piece of the project we've carved out for New Markets Tax Credits.
I apologize, I arrived late.
Yeah.
Do you have a sources and uses that shows us what adds up to, and gives us the gap that gives, gets you to 47? Because as I quickly added this up, Staff Dip was kind enough to email this to members of council.
Yeah, great.
And I looked at this early this morning, my quick calculations only got us to 44 million. So that leaves you with a $3 million gap.
Correct.
Rounding is good, so I rounded everything. But it didn't tell me what your, whether you were applying for federal historic tax credits, Ohio historic tax credits, and New Market Tax Credits.
Correct, yes. So the 10.9 million that you see in the PowerPoint includes federal historic tax credits as well as New Market Tax Credits. So stage one would yield about 5.1 in New Markets, and the remaining would be, would be federal historic. For Ohio tax credits, our application is not competitive. The market is currently, the way they calculate vacancy and the way they calculate square footage does not make public markets competitive projects. And so we're working on lobbying to see if we can change those, those scoring, but we're, we're, we're not there yet, so we're not counting on that in our sources and uses.
Okay. What changed on the New Markets recently that doesn't allow this project to move forward?
Some of the secondary criteria related. So the Ohio City area is going from severely distressed to distressed, and so that then...
Reduction in benefit.
Yeah, and so then, then there's secondary criteria, which we knew that that change was coming, but then they also changed which secondary criteria were gonna, were, were el, they, they changed secondary criteria that you can use to help you boost your sort of impact. And so the secondary criteria we were counting on to include got altered as well.
Okay. Which, you're, you're using a CDFI to obtain these?
Yes.
And who is CDA?
Cleveland Development Advisors.
Oh, so with the partnership?
Correct.
Okay.
We're working on getting to a commitment letter with them. And so, you know, they, they were very excited to hear that the county was potentially involved. They really like seeing that, you know, the state, the city, the county, that everyone's involved. And so, you know, I think this support really makes a difference in their comfort with the project.
Okay, so are, where are you? If there's a $3 million gap to get you to the first phase, we're looking at 1.3, where does the balance come in?
We're gonna have to hustle to get the rest by the end of the year.
Do you have a commitment from other foundations or applications to other foundations besides George Gunn?
We have, we have some commitments from some other folks that aren't public yet, and we're, you know, we anticipate some additional dollars coming in, but we are gonna have to, we are gonna have to hustle, you know, we had a, we, we, we came to the county with, with, you know, presenting a $3 million gap, and we are appreciative for whatever you guys are able to come in with this year, but we will be having to hustle to continue to hit that 3 million.
When did you initiate the, the requests? Has this been in the last six months?
Yeah, well, yes. I mean, my team hasn't, we really just started fundraising this summer. We came on board and took over management of the market in, in April. So this, you know, this is all a hustle, and frankly, because of New Markets Tax Credits, you know, it wasn't necessarily on our radar to have to hit these thresholds this quickly, but because we learned of those changes, it's, you know, really accelerated our, our fundraising request.
Because I hadn't heard of the market needing money from us until, like, less than two weeks ago.
Gotcha.
Because this is of significance, most of us are inclined to like the market.
Yeah.
But as you can see with my questions about the numbers.
Yeah.
We would have been capable of thinking together.
Yeah.
If we'd had more time than in the last week with the holidays subtracting from our focused time, because most of us do get distracted with our families.
I appreciate that.
That's, could I come back if I have another question, Council President?
Certainly can.
Thank you, I'll defer to, I saw another hand somewhere.
Our hand I didn't see?
Oh, I thought that Mr. Byrne was just looking.
Deeper than I am, you know. All right, Rosemarie, I'll, I'll share with you. I, I grew up in Baltimore, Maryland.
Okay.
And there's the, the Lexington Market.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so a great market, and when, in Cleveland, as I came to the West Side Market, I just had that same vibe, the same feel, the, just the enjoyment of being in the west, in the Lexington Market in, in Baltimore, and my mom taking us there, and everything that you would find in the Chesapeake Bay, every form of seafood was there.
Yeah.
Rainbow variety of fish and the fresh produce. It was just a great experience as a kid, you know, and family going there. So to come here to Cleveland and see the same thing, you know, I'm glad that we're having this opportunity to, to revitalize this, this particular institution. So this is certainly a project I'm happy to support, and I have no doubt that you will still reach that threshold with whatever unnamed sources you have so far.
Thank you, Council President, I appreciate that. And I think you speak to something that, you know, I think food is near and dear to everyone's heart, and it's, you know, it has, those are the strongest memories growing up, is meals that you share with your family, places you go, those food cultural traditions. And so I think, you know, in an increasingly more divisive world, I do think places like the West Side Market provide so much opportunity for cultural understanding, for learning, for exposure, you know, for school kids to see and, and grow a passion for food. So, you know, we're very grateful for your support as well.
Great, great. Any other comments before we vote? If not, I'll ask for a motion to...
Oh, I do have a comment.
And I'll have one, too.
So I just want to thank my colleague, Conwell, for bringing this to our attention. We wouldn't have known about this, and I appreciate you doing that, and will happily support. This is county council's contribution. I know there was a county ask in general, but there's two branches. This is the county council, and good luck with, you know, getting that gap funding, perhaps from, you know, different sources. But this is a, a commitment from county council led by Ms. Conwell.
We're very appreciative, and it was really wonderful getting to tour the market with Councilwoman Conwell, and, you know, hear just her passion for everything. So we're so appreciative of your leadership as well.
Councilwoman Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the executive director. I was gonna echo Councilwoman Simons. It's in her district, but she's a champion of this thing, and without her, I don't think we're here today. I have a couple of questions with, is the board a paid board?
No.
And it seems like it's a very strong board.
Yes.
They're doing it for what reason through the chair?
Their, their passion and love for the West Side Market and for Cleveland.
Yeah, and it just makes the reality, this is being taken very seriously.
Yes.
Yeah, and I have my memories of Ignatius walking to the rapid, so it's part of my life growing up, so I'm fully supportive of it, and I look forward to continue trying to be helpful as time goes on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sweeney.
Again, any further comments? We will entertain a motion to refer to passage of secondary, under second reading suspension.
Second.
Properly moved, and who's claiming the second?
Cheryl can have it.
Cheryl, Councilwoman Cheryl Stevens. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
Could you add my name?
Let's add Councilwoman Sweeney's name.
Would you add my name, please?
Add Councilwoman Cheryl Stevens' name.
Turner.
Turner Miller. I'll add mine, too.
Add Kelly, too.
Am I already, okay, thank you, thank you. I got caught up in excitement.
You can add my name.
Councilman Schron as well.
Everybody wants a piece of it.
Okay, we will move on.
Okay, duly noted. Resolution 2024-0441, making an award on requisition RQ 14890 to Duck Fabricators Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $1,585,200 for fire dampers, smoke dampers, combination fire and smoke dampers, and systems inspection, repair, and replacement services for various county buildings, effective upon contract signature of all parties for a period of three years.
Good afternoon, Council President Jones, council members. My name is Matt Reimer, with the Department of Public Works, Facilities Administrator. This award recommendation to Duck Fabricators is for the three-year inspection, maintenance, and repair, if needed, of all of the county's inventory of fire damper, smoke dampers, and combination fire smoke dampers, which are devices that are within our facilities that prevent fire spread in the event of a fire alarm activation or, or a fire. This contract is the third such contract since the county ordinance was established to make sure that we maintain our facilities in accordance with Ohio Fire Code and NFPA best practices. This vendor, Duck Fabricators, is the incumbent vendor. They were the sole respondent to our RFP this time. The, the cost of the contract, the three-year total of, that's being requested of $1,585,200, is approximately 15% higher than the last three-year contract total that we solicited in 2020. We did have a contract amendment that previously extended the current contract to the end of this year. The Duck Fabricators has been an excellent contractor. We've picked up a couple of additional buildings from our recent acquisitions with this contract. We have approximately 3,100 fire damper devices throughout county facilities. More than half of those are at the Justice Center complex, and the others are spread out. The second highest concentration is at Juvenile Justice Center and the Virgili Brown Building. So with, with that, I look forward to any of your questions, and hopefully I can answer them.
Questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
Just so my colleagues know, this, this duck cleaning was championed by my colleague, Mike Gallagher, as part of the institutional knowledge. Early on, he came up and championed and insisted that these ducks be cleaned. If my other colleagues who were here at the beginning recall, this was a Gallagher initiative. So it carries on, and thank you for the safety aspect of, of keeping these clean and preventing fires.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. President, yeah, we, we did this when we were relatively new, got a lot of pushback from the administration at that time, because there was never a problem in the Justice Center, and about two weeks later, we had to evacuate the Justice Center because of a fire. So this, this has come in handy. They found two-by-fours holding some of the, some of the things shut that should have been open, so thank God we did it. And I appreciate council at that time and now continuing this.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any further comments? Councilwoman?
Yes, just a question. In regards to, you said it was only one bidder. Is this the previous bidder?
It is. We had, in 2020, we had two respondents to the request for proposals, but this incumbent vendor was the only respondent this time around.
Any new dampers or anything that need, has been done recently?
Yes, we had acquired a maintenance responsibility of the William Patrick Day facility from BODD earlier this year, and so we inspected those dampers, and we have a number of repairs that we need to make to that facility as part of this upcoming contract. Our medical examiner facility was being maintained by the property manager out there. We've since taken over responsibility for the fire dampers as part of the current contract, and that will extend into this new proposed contract. And our men's shelter, new addition down at 2020 Lakeside, there's only one damper there, but we'll pick that building up with this contract. And then we relinquished during this past contract period our responsibilities at the Bedford Jail.
Mr. Chair, can I have my name added?
Let's add Councilwoman Conwell's name. Any further comments? If not, we will entertain a motion to refer this to the full council, again, for passage under second reading suspension.
So moved.
Properly moved by Councilman Byrne, seconded by Councilman Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-0442, authorizing an amendment to a grant agreement with Team Neo Foundation for fiscal agent services for a partial revenue guarantee to induce Aer Lingus to start and maintain regular nonstop service from Cleveland, Ohio to the Republic of Ireland for the period January 1st, 2023 through May 18th, 2026, to extend the time period to December 31st, 2027. No additional funds required.
Good, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Council President, members of council. Debbie Berry, Chief of Integrated Development for the county, speaking on behalf of our Department of Development. Many of you will recall that in October of 2022, we passed legislation that allowed us to enter into a grant agreement with Team Neo for a partial revenue guarantee of new service by Aer Lingus to start and maintain regular nonstop service from Cleveland to Dublin, Ireland. That period was from January 1st, 2023, to May 18th, 2026. A total amount to be paid by the county to support that was up to $825,000 over three years per a step-down formula. These funds have been certified and are being held by the Department held by the Department of Development. There were a number of other county partners or other community partners that signed on to this revenue guarantee, including the City of Cleveland, Greater Cleveland Partnership, Destination Cleveland, and of course, Jobs Ohio. I'm just going to turn this over to Bill Kaler, who is the CEO of Team Neo, to update you on where we are with the agreement right now and talk a little bit about the success and looking at additional service provided from it. So, Bill?
Good afternoon, everyone. And thank you very much for the time and for your support of this originally. We ask for it again as you consider extending it the additional year. As we entered into the first annual review process with Aer Lingus, we saw an opportunity, they saw one, we saw one, to enhance the frequency of the flights. In the original agreement, for most of the year, not every week in the year, but for most of the year, Aer Lingus was flying four flights a week. We saw an opportunity based on the demand we'd seen and the opportunities, the demand that was building, to potentially increase that to a fifth day of the week. And for, in particular, the middle of the summer, two months at six days a week. There's value in that for any of the passengers who do fly it in those. But also, as we build frequency and we build support for the route in the market, having frequency matters. We hear that from Brian Francis, who tells us that is that is the case as a general matter in the industry. And we know that there are people anecdotally who did not take the flight, whether they're business or leisure travelers, because the flights were not available on the right days. So these kinds of things are very helpful as we build frequency and build support for the route. From an economic development perspective, we are very pleased with what this route has done for us in a relatively short period of time. We could point to five specific meetings we had here with companies who are considering establishing a presence here. Irish companies thinking about coming here, two in particular are in significant discussions with us. They're healthcare companies, relatively small, but healthcare companies. We know also that our higher ed institutions are establishing relationships with some of the other higher ed institutions over there, which were great for our students and certainly, hopefully, good for theirs. So these kinds of, they're, we're in discussions with the governor and other members of the Jobs Ohio staff and making a trade mission in either early summer or late spring kind of timeframe. And there's also one that we're in discussions with getting the corresponding Irish entity to do a trip over here to familiarize them with our market as well. This kind of activity is building and we think it's really important to continue to support the route. We're pleased with how it's growing and we ask your support in extending the agreement for that additional year to give us the latitude to build the frequency and build the route for the benefit of our economic development activities. I will stop there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions? Councilwoman Conwell?
Yes, Bill, I didn't catch your last name.
Kaler.
Kaler.
Kaler, K-O-E-H-L-E-R, sorry.
Are there any other agreements with other major cities?
Well, yeah, we were the we were the only one last year that that Aer Lingus started in the United States. Most recently, they actually announced they're opening up flights in Indianapolis. And we know that there are other cities who are trying to cultivate them to, in the Midwest, who are trying to cultivate them to start a route there. But we are strongly resisting that and hoping this kind of statement would protect that interest.
Thank you.
Councilman Jackson.
Bill, is there any intent in looking at Shannon by them also? Do they fly into Shannon or just Dublin?
I don't think they do. They go through Dublin.
Thanks. Councilman Miller?
Mr. President, to Mr. Kaler, what exactly does the agreement obligate us to do and under what circumstances?
So it's a minimum revenue guarantee. There's a formula and we measure it every year. And if they hit the revenue targets, we don't pay. If they don't hit it, we do pay. Each of the years, it's a, as Deb said, it's scaled down. So in the first year, it's 45% of the commitment. The next year, it's 35. And the year after that, it's 25. But if any any funds that are not used, say this year, would roll into next year and be available next year and so forth. What this amendment will do is allow them to recapture any rollover in the fourth year. And in the original agreement, that was not possible.
And so have we made payments so far?
In the first year, your portion in the first year will be 210,000 out of 825 total. But the the expected for the first year was 371,000. So you will pay about a little more than 50% of what the stated amount would have been in the contract.
And did you say that in the fourth year, anything that's left over and rolled over would also be provided?
Be eligible to be drawn upon, yes.
If necessary.
If necessary. In the first, in the original agreement, that was not possible. That's the difference here.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Mr. President. My thought is it's an international flight, right?
Yes.
We don't have many of them in Hopkins, do we?
No.
And we're at Hopkins International Airport?
Yes.
And in years past, it was the direct flight from Continental to England.
Mm-hmm.
All excitement. Then we had the direct flight from Continental to France. Pretty excited. They last for a year.
Mm-hmm.
They never came back, asked for an extension. This is kudos to the city of Cleveland, the county, your leadership, and Mr. Crawford as well, that it is maintaining and growing and asking for more flights. So this is just evident that you're doing a good job.
Well, you're kind. Thanks to the team for doing it. I would say this, every company who comes in here and asks us, who's an attraction play from over there, wherever that is, to here, they want to know whether we have some sort of easy, readily available access to Europe or somewhere else. And for most companies here, depending on where you're going, a lot of times, it's a two-stop trip. Aer Lingus makes it a one-stop trip. I'll get the number wrong, but I want to say it's about 78 or 80 different markets in Europe and Western Europe and other places beyond, in about 35, 36, 37 countries, something like that. People think about this flight as being Cleveland to Dublin. It's Cleveland to Dublin and somewhere else for a lot of, and a lot of companies find that very attractive relative to going to LaGuardia and then Frankfurt and then somewhere else. It saves a lot of time. It's very important.
And through the chair, that was my thought, but it's also for the casual traveler.
Yeah.
Because everybody's like, okay, I'll take the Aer Lingus over, then I'm going to go over here, over there, over there.
Exactly.
And our other option is hop in a car and drive to Detroit, drive to Pittsburgh, drive to Chicago, and get that direct flight over to somewhere overseas. So keep up the good work and I'm glad we can play our role to help.
Thank you.
The agreement, to my understanding, was to subsidize in the event that maybe the flight didn't work as we already hoped. And now we've extended that opportunity, if that's a fair way to put it. What is Aer Lingus's assessment of what they've experienced so far with this flight?
They're pleased with it. Or, you know, they, we had equal outs on either side if we wanted, if we wanted to stop. But obviously, they don't. And they're putting their, you know, money where their mouth is, where they're setting aside additional frequency in this route to do more. So they must see the demand as well. We've seen some of the numbers that they're playing around with. Nothing is set in stone, but they like the partnership. They've told us they're going to increase the marketing here. And we're going to do some things with them to make sure that we do, maybe if we think there's an opportunity to do a better job with some of the business community here, to make sure they're aware of the benefits and the additional frequency so they take advantage of it as well.
Tell us again, Bill, how long is the extension for that original contract? So example, if something didn't pan out, there's a subsidy that they would receive.
One additional year. No additional money, one additional year.
Councilman Schron?
Yeah, just picking up on Councilwoman Sweeney's comments. I, we have actually staff on my team that live in England and they find it faster to fly from England to Dublin, take Aer Lingus to Cleveland than it is to make connections to the United States through any other city. So the whole process, they can take a short hop from London on over and grab the grab the nonstop right into Cleveland and be right here. So I think we should be promoting that to an awful lot of our Cleveland-based manufacturing and industrial businesses that are right here, that this is, this can be a game changer as far as saving you time, effort, money, and things of that, that nature. So it's, for us, we're experiencing it firsthand as a real plus out there.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a question about the success of, we were sold on this in part that we would get businesses here from Ireland. And you spoke to two potential businesses. Is that what's in the works only? There's nothing definitive that's happened since we approved this years ago?
Well, we've
Besides, I'm not talking about the flight and
Yeah, yeah.
Great to have a, you know, nonstop.
Respectfully, we've been at it for 18 months.
Mm-hmm.
And the attraction game is a long-term game. It takes time for, to find the companies who are seeing the opportunity and see the fit, the strategic fit with what we're trying to do. We've have, we've, we're very pleased with the five meetings that we have had with Team Neo, and we think there is plenty more. We're very pleased with the visibility our higher ed institutions are, you know, having and the opportunities over there. Those kinds of things help over time. Should we be able to do more? I hope so. And I think we should expect so. That's one of the reasons why we're excited about a mutual exchange, if you will, where the governor and our, the Jobs Ohio team will get over there in the spring. And hopefully, we're expecting their similar organization, the acronym is IDA, to come over here and learn more about our market. We have a little bit of an ace in the hole, I think, at Team Neo, because a gentleman on our team is the honorary counsel for Ireland in Ohio. So we're finding different ways to take advantage of that as well. So we hope we can do more and better. We're not satisfied, but we think this is an important aspect of our story.
Okay, so we'll stay tuned.
Please do.
Because we've had ambassadors go over there and spend time with the, you know, obviously, to try to establish these business relationships. So we'll see if it actually pans out. I hope I hope that happens, that we actually see some material benefit other than the one way, which I appreciate.
We, I hope we do. And we heard Councilman Schron share his own business experience. We have Staris, we have Eaton, we have many other companies who have gone over there, and this is really helpful to them too. So we would expect those kinds of things to have other types of economic benefits.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? I will entertain a motion again to recommend for passage under second reading suspension.
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-0443, making awards on requisition 13617 to various providers in the total amount not to exceed $575,000 for financial counseling, foreclosure prevention, and real property tax and services for Cuyahoga County residents for the period October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2026 for providers 1 through 5 as listed on the agenda.
Director Jackson?
Good afternoon. Sarah Parks Jackson, Department of Housing and Community Development. We have before you the five contracts that we do every couple of years with our nonprofit organizations to provide foreclosure prevention assistance, financial counseling to the residents of the communities. This is done with our community development block grant funds as well as some DTAC funding that is provided to us from the treasurer's office. The DTAC funding allows us to serve residents whose income exceed the HUD 80% of area median income. And it also allows us to provide funding to those residents who live in the entitlement communities of Cleveland, East Cleveland, Lakewood, Parma, Cleveland Heights, and Euclid. Over the years, these services have been of great benefit to the residents, those that are looking just to learn how to budget, those who are learning how, what it takes to buy a house and how they save up, to the folks who are having some financial difficulties, to the folks who find themselves in a foreclosure situation because all five of these nonprofit agencies have relationships with banks and other lenders to work with to see if they cannot work through the the issues. They are also all HUD-certified counseling agencies, and they've done good work for us in the past. So we ask your approval.
Any questions from council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I so move for second reading suspension.
For a second reading suspension by Councilman Miller, seconded by
Stevens.
By Councilwoman Cheryl Stevens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Could you please add my name?
Add Councilwoman Meredith Turner's name.
My name as well.
Councilman Miller's name.
And Councilwoman Stevens.
Stevens.
Conwell.
And Councilwoman Conwell. Byrne?
Byrne.
Duly noted. Resolution 2024-0444, authorizing a contract with Microsoft Corporation in the amount not to exceed $1,590,995.70 for Microsoft Unified Enterprise Software Installation, Configuration, Training, and Support Services for the period December 6, 2024 through September 1, 2026.
Good afternoon, Council President and council members. Dennis Sullivan with the county's Department of IT before you as a request for approval to continue Microsoft Enterprise Support Services. This contract is inclusive of services for desktop and server support operating systems, database servers, and some things that are more notable to everybody, everyday uses of email, Teams, Word, PowerPoint, items like that. It's also inclusive of training sessions, training availability for the staff to get, to stay up on top of items such as mitigating Microsoft cybersecurity exposure. And it's also for cloud server infrastructure building. And it's also with the daily evolving artificial intelligence. Those are just some of the related topics that are included in the training sessions. This is a county IT standard. It is the platform, the Microsoft software platform that is used throughout the county. Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
I just didn't catch his name.
If you would repeat your name, sir?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Your name.
Dennis Sullivan.
Okay. All right, we'll entertain a motion again for a second reading suspension.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resolution 202
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-0445, making an award on requisition 14298 to Data Bank IMX LLC in the amount not to exceed $1,239,93.05 for various licenses, maintenance and support services of the enterprise on-base system for the period January 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028.
Again, Board, Dennis Sullivan, Department of IT. Data Bank was the awarded winner off an RFP. This is for on-base software maintenance and support services. The on-bases use for the repository of our document management system. It is everything from open tickets for any kind of problems at all to all the document management, the images that are stored, as other systems are retired out. Think of it as a bank for documents.
Any questions from council?
Just wanted to ask through the chair to Mr. Sullivan, does this contract cover all Cuyahoga County?
That's a very good question. Yes, it does now. The last contract did not cover the county prosecutor's office. This does, and HHS is under the state's agreement.
Further questions? Not, we entertain a motion to If not, we entertain a motion to recommend this to the full counsel under second reading suspension.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-0446, making an award on requisition 14900 to Relics Doing Business as Lexus Nexus, a division of Relics, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $947,412 for print and online legal research services for the period January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027.
Good afternoon, Rick Maniloff, Law Department. As it relates to our 2024-0446 and contract number 4985, Lexus Nexus is a leader in the legal research industry which provides critical resources to lawyers and other legal professionals, not just in the law department, but throughout the county. In the agreement, under consideration, there will be 615 licenses distributed across the county for the next three years, which would enable 24/7 access to law department attorneys, prosecutors, public defenders, judges, judicial attorneys, and others throughout the county. Lexus Nexus previously held the county's contract for these services over the past four years and was awarded the current contract after achieving the highest score in a request for proposals that was issued earlier in 2024. The law department led that RFP process with participation from all user agencies at both the development and evaluation stages of the RFP process. A significant enhancement of note in this agreement is the inclusion of 50 county-wide licenses for the company's new artificial intelligence functionality, which will be shared among the user agencies. Again, not just including the law department, but Court of Common Pleas, 8th District Court of Appeals, and the prosecutor's office. And so we would respectfully request a favorable recommendation for approval at tonight's meeting under second rule, second reading suspension.
All right, any question from counsel? If not, we'll entertain a motion for second reading suspension.
So moved?
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resolution 2024-0447, authorizing an amendment to a contract with Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services Board for the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Addiction Diversion Center for the period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2024. To extend the time period to December 31, 2026 to make budget line item revisions and for additional funds in the amount not to exceed $12,151,731.1 effective upon signature of all parties.
Good afternoon, Brandy Carney, Director of Public Safety and Justice for the county. Hello, council members. Happy 2024's end. I have just a few quick slides, which I apologize, they won't be on the screen here, but I think you do, you should have handouts in front of you. Again, this is for a two-year extension of the current contract for the Cuyahoga County Diversion Center. As many of you are already aware, that program contains three components. The first component includes the contracts that we have here with the Adams Board. They have oversight at the facility, the day-to-day, although they don't run the day-to-day, but they also provide the crisis intervention training to all law enforcement officers throughout Cuyahoga County as well as other public safety officials and dispatchers. That's both a certification for the training, which is really great training, how to interact with individuals with substance abuse and/or mental health concerns, how to de-escalate situations, which is critical importance, things of that nature. So the Adams Board does provide the training. The second component of the contract is the 24/7-365 call-in center that's used to triage. So everyone who goes to the diversion center has to call that line first so that people don't show up at the diversion center incorrectly, knowing law enforcement, for example, they show up incorrectly and then, you know, you might not get them back again. So we want to make sure the appropriate people are going there. And finally, the third component is big, the day-to-day operations that's run by Orianna House, and they do some of the subcontracting for medical, including the onsite psychiatrist who we've had since opening, really phenomenal with UH that they have. So I'm going to do just a quick, a few stats regarding this. Will either be from inception, which is May of 2021, which I can't believe it's already been that fast. And, but I also have it through third quarter of this year, not through the fourth quarter. Let's see here. So a number of calls, as I said, the triage line that people calls, number of calls since inception are over 5,300 calls that we've received into the center. Of those, about 837 have been from police officers and a little more than 4,500 have been from community, which is self-agencies or member calls. At the, as of third quarter of this year, the number of calls we have is 619 calls, and of those, 55 are from police. The next slide just shows the gradual increase in admissions that we've had since inception at the diversion center. As you can see, each year, we've, we've grown a little bit, and we've actually been much more consistent, I would say, this year on the admissions that we receive. Usually average around 70, the high 70s throughout the month, some very close to 100 some of the months, but mostly around 70 individuals. The next slide that you have shows the admissions that we have, both to date as well as per quarter of this year at the diversion center. Just some terminology, the admissions intakes being completed is that an individual either came or was brought to the diversion center and actually completed the whole initial assessment process. They're provided an individual plan for that individual that they stayed up until that point and through that point. And so we have 20, over 2,400 admissions that have been done at the diversion center for individuals with SUD or SMI, so severe mental illness and/or substance use disorder or co-occurring, which is much higher numbers of the co-occurring, as you can imagine. And contacts, which is just individuals that have came or showed up at the diversion center, over 4,700 since we opened. So really shows so many individuals that we've been able to help through the years, which has been really great. Client diagnosis, length of stay speaks to the acuteness in individuals. And I know you guys often hear it through our, the individuals in our jail, but how acute some of the people are. You can see that the majority of individuals who come aren't just, have either a mental health issue and/or, excuse me, or a substance abuse issue, but it's a co-occurring issue. So a lot of times that costs more money and takes more time because you have to treat both of them and not as straightforward, as you can imagine. On the last page that you have, I just show that 40% of clients completed their program. I did use the word successfully. Challenging word to use, but I would say that means their, their length of stay, which is usually anywhere from five to nine stays, was the plan that they were provided for their acute need when they come to the diversion center, their medical plan, that they completed that entire length of stay. You know, I would argue, and I'm sure so many others would, that this isn't a one-and-done. You know, people don't finish here and then they're good for the rest of their life. This is a forever illness, as many of you can imagine. So I would say we have a lot of individuals, and we track this every month, that come. Maybe they stay two days and then they leave, but then they come back and they stay three or four days. That's absolutely a success to me. If an individual finishes their time here and if they come back again and, you know, things happen in life, that's still a success. So I did use the word, but I just kind of wanted to put some parameters around it. Every case is unique, obviously. 45% of clients left on their own against medical advice. But again, that's from the very beginning of being brought there until, you know, wherever in their stay, that percentage of individuals. I do have a slide just to show how many dispatchers, law enforcement professionals, and public safety. This is the training that the Adams Board, the CIT training I mentioned earlier, that they do on behalf of us for this contract. They also separately do a lot of these trainings. For example, through the consent decree, they do for Cleveland Police. So this is strictly for the numbers through our contract. The first year, as you can imagine, we had a lot of people countywide trained, almost 700. But throughout 2024 through the third quarter, we have had another 210 trained. So it's a 40-hour class, received certification at the end. I've heard even our sheriff has acknowledged it was one of the CIT training he received prior to coming here was one of the best trainings that he's received because it's tangible, it's, it's things that they can use. You know, how to talk to an individual, how to de-escalate. So important and often maybe that's not something that's in their regular course when they're becoming an officer initially. A couple of important notes that I would say in addition to this request in front of you is the US Department of Justice funded an evaluation for our program. So currently, we did do an RFP, my office, and we have the Begun Center that's doing a evaluation of the both programmatic, operational for the diversion center. They're to come back with best practices, lessons learned, recommendations, things that may or be working well and not. So I think that's a really great opportunity for us. So we've started there doing all of their interviews with different people, both at the center and clients, my office, and, and other agencies. So that's expected to be done in the coming months, and I will share that with everybody here. Let's see, I did want to note, this is a, an increase for this two-year extension. I would say, as, or I will say, as many of you know, and as I mentioned, the acuteness of individuals is, is challenging, the level. You know, these are only acute individuals that we take at the center. So we're not taking anybody unless they meet that certain criteria. So it is expensive. I have had discussions and will absolutely follow up with Orianna, who is the day-to-day provider and medical provider to ensure that the medical staff or nursing staff are on staff with them and so as not to tap into an outside agency contract because when you use those, they are more expensive, but it's usually only temporary. So to make sure that we're having on staff so we can keep the cost down. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any additional questions. I would respectfully request that this be second reading, what's the word I'm looking for? Suspension, not expansion, suspension of them days. So thank you.
All right, through the chair to Ms. Carney. Refresh my mind, who, who owns the building again that it's currently?
Orianna House, Orianna House does own the building.
My second question would be, I know we're open emissions to, to family members to drop off. What is the cost savings for the individuals that did not get incarcerated?
So I can provide some more detailed numbers for the cost. I, I don't have those numbers in front of me. There's no cost whatsoever to any individual that comes to the center. So it's solely for the county. It is, it does cost us more at this center, absolutely, from individuals that are in jail. But again, individuals here, maybe here for five to nine days, they're getting dedicated one-on-one treatment for their individual illness or need rather than in the jail that's one of the services that we provide, but it isn't that, you know, straightforward solely for that individual the entire time that we're there. We really try and work through that relationship and make them feel comfortable there so it's not feeling punitive for them, even if they are there following some type of-
More of expensive cost.
It is.
Any further questions? Counselman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director, can you give us some, something of a breakdown of what the $12,151,000 is going to be spent for?
Absolutely. The majority is for Orianna House increases, for staffing, largely for staffing. There's some operational needs, or excuse me, some needs fairly small for the building. And I do have it itemized in the contract, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but it's largely for increases. They did provide their staff an increase at the end of last year. And I, it was over 6%, and so it's largely for those increases as well as their contracted staff that I mentioned, those agency nurses that they've used.
So, Mr. President, Director, you're saying there's some capital expense for, for building improvements, is that correct?
The cap, it's, it's minimal building expenses, things that they have. I think one of them was assigned to fix some, some minimal costs, but it's largely for staffing needs.
So it's more like maintenance?
That's correct, that's correct, that's a better word.
And, and Director, what's the target opening date for the Crisis Center?
Thank you, Councilman, for that question. The Crisis Center is a center just for the other members. The Adams Board did receive a significant amount of funding from the state approximately a year ago to open up a countywide crisis center. I would just say, when we opened up the diversion center, as you know, it was for diversion for law enforcement only to take individuals to the center. And we've tried really hard to, to be accommodating to any individual that needs the service to come. So to keep people out of the jail and bring them to the diversion center, to, I have pilot programs with probation and with the courts to get people, to get them to the center rather than in the jail. With people, as I said, we opened it up to friends and family, and anybody can go to the center and not just law enforcement drop-offs. So we've tried within the context of the certification that we have at the diversion center to open it up to all these different populations, but it has been somewhat challenging because we do have a certification to run, actually two. The Crisis Center, rather, is a larger, more broad, all of these populations, including individuals with mental health and addiction needs that aren't in a crisis situation. Maybe they just have a smaller, temporary, not near-as-acute situation that they have a need, as well as these very acute situations. So a Crisis Center is something that takes all of those individuals. The centers and, and my office, myself, and the county have been starting preliminary planning for a Crisis Center to open in approximately two years with those funds from the state as well as other funds that we've identified.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any further questions? Counselman Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brandy, you get beat up a little bit, you do a great job. So I just want to say that publicly. And just for the record, Orianna House owns the building?
They do.
And they take it very serious. And it's, Mr. Lawrence is in the audience. He's, wants to, he's showing us the respect that, that he wants to. I don't want to say deserve, but he's shown us the respect, and he's a true partner. I've known him for many years, and I just want to give him a shout out as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you.
I would just say, since the beginning, Orianna House has done the day-to-day. It is so rare that I hear anything negative come out. When individuals go there for treatment, it's usually always positive. It's really been such a success in that way. So I would, you know, their staff has been really great at Orianna from the beginning.
All right, thank you. Counselwoman?
Mr. President, I just wanted to thank Brandy as well. I think this is a success, even though it's evolved into something we didn't originally anticipate, but it's serving a really important need in the community. And people like to go back. I, when I toured a couple times, people like to hang out. It's, it's community for them and a safe place to go after even they receive the treatment. So it's really, I, I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to move this to the full counsel under second reading suspension.
So moved?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Mr. President?
Counselman Miller.
May I have my name added?
Let's add Counselman Miller's name. Okay?
Add my name too as well.
And Counselwoman Stevens.
Turner.
Turner. Devon Conwell.
Simon.
Sweeney.
Simon, Counselwoman Marty J. Sweeney. And Burn.
And Kelly.
Burn, Kelly, and I'll put my name in there too. Get on the bandwagon. Except for Shron, make note, except for Shron. Okay, Counselman Shron as well. All right, colleagues, we have one more resolution and three discussion items to complete in 30 minutes as well as a 20-minute ethics training. So we're going to go through our bond item next, and then we're going to have our 20-minute ethics training before we go into the discussion. So at this time, Madam Clerk, if you would like to read that resolution to the record.
So, Council President, this item was discussed at the November 26 Committee of the Whole Meeting and was placed on the Committee of the Whole Agenda in error. This item is on tonight's council meeting agenda for a recommendation for passage under second reading suspension of the rules. So if you could make a motion to refer this item out of committee in a second?
I will make that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded?
Second.
Who's seconded, please?
Sweeney.
Sweeney.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, at this time, we will have our ethics training.
Good afternoon, Council President Jones, Council members. It is time for the 2014 Ethics to be administered to you. It will take approximately 17 minutes for that. Once it is completed, I'll see if you have any questions, and then we'll go from there. Thank you, we'll get started.
Hi, my name is Alexa Beeler, and I'm the Inspector General for Cuyahoga County. Welcome to your 2024 Ethics Training. As a county employee, you are required to abide by the Cuyahoga County Ethics Code. These rules set high standards and are in place to ensure that we are conducting ourselves in a way that promotes integrity and trust in county government. This means that we are held to a stricter code of conduct than those in the private sector. Sometimes, what may be okay while working for a private employer can be a crime in public employment. So it is critical that you understand the ethics rules and reach out to the Agency of Inspector General before you act if you need any help navigating the topics we will be discussing today. Thank you for your time today and for all that you do for the county. County resources should only be used for county purposes. This means you can't use county property or supplies for your personal required use. Personnel and your time are considered county resources, which the county pays for with taxpayer dollars, so it is imperative that when you are at work, you are working. This means that personal matters and conversations should be handled during lunch or outside of work hours. Also, your clock-in and clock-out times must accurately reflect when you are working, not when you are pulling into the parking garage, and not your scheduled start time if you are running behind. When it comes to county time, a good way to keep yourself honest is to act like someone is watching, because even if your supervisor isn't, you can bet that your coworkers are. This is a frequent complaint our agency receives, because county employees who are doing the right thing don't like to see county employees who are not. There are a few exceptions where the use of county resources for private or personal purposes will not be an ethics violation, such as if the use is de minimis or immaterial. What that means in practice is that a quick personal call on county time or using a paperclip or staple for personal use would not be a violation of the Ethics Code. However, we caution you to be careful. Even though the Ethics Code allows a de minimis use of county resources, you don't want to find yourself in a situation where our agency is looking into your use of a county resource to determine whether or not it is de minimis. It is always safest to err on the side of caution. Also, just because the use of a county resource is not an ethics violation does not mean you are always in the clear, because you also have to comply with other county policies. Your supervisor may have stricter standards, and it is important to note that even a brief digression from your work duties to browse the Internet may be a violation of the county's Internet use policy. And there are some things you should never do with county resources, even if de minimis, such as using any amount of time or tangible resources for your outside job or for political The county has over 4,000 employees, so it is not surprising that we have employees who are related to other employees. As you can see on the slide, the Ethics Code defines relative broadly and even includes non-related household members and anyone that has those relationships listed to your spouse or domestic partner. Having relatives work for the county is not by itself an ethics violation, however, you cannot supervise a relative or participate in any way in a decision to appoint, hire, promote, discipline, or discharge a relative. This means that even being a part of the discussion is strictly prohibited. If you have a relative that works for the county, it is important that you disclose that relationship with the Agency of Inspector General by completing a nepotism statement, which can be found on our website. Your position with the county should only be used to benefit the county and should never be used to secure a financial or material benefit or a promise of a financial or material benefit for yourself, a relative, a business associate, or a private organization that has any relationship to you, your spouse, or a member of your household. If you are ever faced with a situation where your work with the county could secure a benefit to you or a person or organization related to you, you must not act, and you may need to take the additional step of disclosing the issue, which we'll talk about in the next slide. And as always, if you are ever unsure, please come to us for guidance before you act. Additionally, supervisors should not have their subordinate employees do personal tasks for them. You cannot require or coerce a subordinate employee to perform any task unreasonably outside the scope of his or her county employment that does not further a county interest. This includes things like picking up your dry cleaning or lunch and performing clerical work for your outside interests. Supervisors may, however, ask their subordinate employees to perform non-county tasks, not on county time, as long as they offer fair payment. But be mindful that subordinate employees typically aim to please their supervisors, so they may not feel as though they can say no to such a request. For this reason, excessive requests by a supervisor to perform tasks unreasonably outside the scope of the subordinate employee's county employment may constitute a violation of this section, even if the supervisor pays the subordinate employee. The county Ethics Code also breaks out a few specific examples that are considered to be a misuse of official position. For instance, you cannot knowingly misrepresent your personal opinion to be the official position of the county, nor can you have the county pay for you to attend a conference and then fail to attend without obtaining approval or refunding the cost to the county. Also, as public employees, you are bound by Ohio's Sunshine laws, which means you have an obligation to make public records available for inspection or copying and cannot destroy, manipulate, or suppress public records. Confidential information, on the other hand, must be kept confidential forever. You are additionally prohibited from accessing any information that's not related to what you're doing for your job, and you absolutely cannot use any information you learn to benefit As public servants, we have a responsibility to make public decisions objectively with the county's best interests in mind and not based on our own interests. Conflicts of interest occur when you have interests on both sides of a matter. You could have a conflict of interest if your personal interests or the interests of relatives or business associates could compromise the decisions you make in your county position. Having a conflict of interest is not illegal, and in fact, they are actually quite normal because public servants have families and friends and may have businesses and other connections to the community. It is how we respond to the conflict of interest that matters. Anytime you have to make a decision that could result in a direct financial or material benefit to you, your relative, your business associate, or any private organization in which you have an interest, you are required to disclose and recuse. The disclosure must occur as soon as you first learn of the potential conflict of interest, and it must be made either to the public in an open meeting or in writing to the Agency of Inspector General. You must then recuse yourself from the matter by fully and completely abstaining from making decisions about or influencing how the matter is resolved. This includes refraining from not only voting, but also from discussing, reviewing, recommending, inspecting, investigating, or taking any other action on the matter or participating in any way whatsoever. Additionally, you cannot be paid by a non-county entity or person to perform services on any matter that is before any county agency or department, even if it's not your own, and even if you will not personally appear before the agency. So for example, you can't be paid by an outside client to prepare drawings that will be submitted to the Department of Public Works, regardless of whether you work in a different department, and regardless of whether you attach your name or face to the work. As with most of ethics law, conflicts of interest issues are extremely complex and fact-specific, so please reach out to our agency when you first become aware of a potential issue, so we can help guide you in making a decision that won't have negative repercussions in the future. As a general rule, you cannot do business with your public employer. This means you cannot sell goods or services to the county, and this is true whether there's a written contract or not. You can have no part in authorizing a contract that could benefit you, your family, or your business associates. If the county is spending money on something with which you have a connection, please reach out to the Agency of Inspector General to make sure you're not breaking the law. For instance, if there's a county grant to a nonprofit you're involved with, or a contract with your spouse's employer, or if the county wants to buy something from a business you co-own, there could be an issue. The benefit to you or a person or organization connected to you doesn't have to be financial for it to be a problem. So if you serve as an unpaid board member for a nonprofit that receives any amount of funding from the county, it could be just as big a problem for you as if you directly sold the county goods. There are very narrow exceptions to this general rule, however, they require such a detailed level of analysis, and there is so much at stake that we won't even address them today other than to say, come to us so we can help guide you through this type of issue. It is important to note that this is a criminal statute, and a violation could result in a felony, so it is critically important that you reach out to our agency anytime you or someone close to you could stand to benefit from a contract with the county. There are very strict rules on whether and when someone in public service may accept a gift. A gift can be anything of value. Common gifts that those in the public service may encounter are meals, travel, discounts, conference fees, and entertainment, as well as gifts around birthdays and holidays. In deciding whether you may keep the gift, it is important to look at who wants to give you the gift. If the giver of the gift is a person or entity who does business with the county, is seeking to do business with the county, or is regulated by or interested in matters before the county, then you cannot accept or solicit a gift from that person if the gift is substantial. There is no hard and fast rule about what is considered substantial, so you should always err on the side of caution and reach out to us for guidance. Even if the gift is not substantial, you are never allowed to accept something that is intended to influence your official duties. The county Ethics Code doesn't allow you to accept any gift from someone if a decision you have to make could affect their interest, even if the gift would usually be something that is considered insignificant and allowable. As with most everything, there are exceptions that may apply. For instance, reasonable customary gifts for special occasions are usually okay. It's also usually okay to accept meals and refreshments of an ordinary character if you're speaking at a professional event or if you're attending a fundraiser or a community event. There are many factors that must be taken into consideration, and this area is very fact-specific, so please come to us before accepting any gifts so we can help you act within the rules. You cannot accept any rewards or gifts for the performance of your county duties from any source other than the county. Your county's salary and county benefits are the only compensation you should receive for your county work. You can never accept a gift as a thank you for performing your public service, even if the gift is insignificant in value. The county Ethics Code presumes that a gift is intended as a reward for official action when the gift is from someone that has obtained county action that involved your participation within the preceding year. All thank you gifts are prohibited, whether it's to compensate you for a specific action or decision, or just for the general performance of your job duties. So you cannot accept a gift from a developer whose loan you just helped finalize, nor can you accept a gift from a member of the public as a thank you for your public service. Whether you are allowed to engage in certain types of political activity often comes down to whether you are unclassified or classified. In general, unclassified employees are not restricted from engaging in any type of political activity as long as it's on their own time and they don't use county resources or misuse their county position. However, classified employees have much stricter rules, and while they can still participate in activities such as registering, voting, contributing to candidates, and expressing opinions, they cannot participate in most partisan political activity. So for instance, classified employees cannot campaign for a candidate for partisan elective office, solicit money for any political party or partisan candidate, or participate in any activity that is geared toward party success. Whether you are unclassified or classified, you are never allowed to donate to or solicit donations for the reelection campaign of your own currently elected employer or confirming authority, just as those elected officials are prohibited from soliciting or accepting campaign contributions from you. Up until now, we have talked about all the things the Ethics Code prohibits you from doing, but these next few topics address the actions the Ethics Code requires you to take. The first is with regard to secondary employment. If you have any outside employment that the IRS wants to know about, then we want to know about it too. You must file a secondary employment disclosure form that can be found on our website, and once received, we will determine whether your outside position and your county position are compatible and whether there are any conflicts of interest that would prohibit you from holding both. Disclosure is also required if you have a fiduciary interest with an entity and that entity receives funding from the county. This is required even if the position you hold is uncompensated. So for instance, if you are on the board of a nonprofit and that nonprofit receives any amount of money from the county, you must disclose that to our agency, even if you are not paid for your services. In either case, you are required to disclose within 30 days of accepting your outside position, but we encourage you to disclose as soon as possible so we can help you avoid any potential problems. While you are in your county position and for one year after you leave, you cannot represent a new employer before a public agency on a matter in which you personally participated in your county position. For instance, if the county contracts with a vendor for one of its various programs, and your job with the county is to do work involving that program, you cannot then represent that vendor before the county on the same program for one year after your service with the county ends. You are required to disclose to our agency anytime you are seeking employment with an entity that is doing business with the county, seeking to do business with the county, or is in any way interested in matters before the county or regulated by it. This disclosure is required when you take any steps to seek employment with such an entity, including responding to a job advertisement or sending a resume, and it is not just limited to when you receive a job offer. The Agency of Inspector General will help guide you to make sure you do not unintentionally violate any ethics laws, both while you are still employed by the county and with any future employer. A whistleblower is someone who reports wrongdoing, and that report is referred to as a whistleblower complaint. The county Ethics Code requires you to report known ethics violations of Cuyahoga County employees, elected officials, and board members. There is no guesswork involved. If you know of an ethics violation, you must make a whistleblower complaint in order to be in compliance with the Ethics Code. If you see any activity that you think might be contrary to law or regulation, or any evidence of fraud, waste, corruption, or abuse, it is easy to report, and you will be protected from retaliation. And this is true even if you were wrong, as long as the reporting was in good faith. If you make a whistleblower complaint and then experience retaliation, you may file a complaint with the Personnel Review Commission, who will then determine if retaliation occurred and issue an appropriate remedy. It is easy to make a whistleblower complaint, and you may do so in a number of ways. You can choose to report in writing or verbally, and if you do not feel comfortable disclosing your name, you may report anonymously. You can choose to report to our agency, one of your supervisors, or the Department of Human Resources. To those employees who are supervisors or are in HR, you have additional responsibilities. You must never retaliate against a whistleblower, and if a whistleblower comes to you with an ethics violation, you need to ensure that it gets into the right hands. This means that if the whistleblower complaint is verbal, you must prepare a written record. Supervisors, you must notify either our agency or HR within five days of any whistleblower complaint you receive, and to those employees in HR, any whistleblower complaint you receive must be given to our agency within five days. There truly is no wrong way to contact the Agency of Inspector General. You can call, write, or visit us in person. Whether you have a question about if you can take a certain action without violating the Ethics Code, or if you have information about a violation, we want to hear from you, and we want you to reach out in the way that works best for you. The two most important things to take away from today's training are to ask before you act, and if you see something, say something. And remember, there is no wrong way to do either. Thank you for your time today and for all the great work you do for the county.
Are there any questions? No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, have a good one.
Thank you. All right, we will go into our discussion items.
Council President, items A through C are for discussion only. No vote is required for these items being submitted, and they're being submitted for introduction at the December 3 Council Meeting. If there are no objections to the items being considered and recommended for passage under first reading adoption under suspension of rules 9D and 12A. If committee members decide they would like an item to be referred to their designated committee for further discussion next year, the recommendation will be made at tonight's council meeting.
All right, who will speak to the first matter?
Good afternoon, Council members. Michael Dever, Department of Public Works, here to present on this revenue generating agreement with the City of Cleveland Heights. I believe it's 15 years now we've had an agreement with the City of Cleveland Heights, and it's an annual agreement that needs to be renewed to provide sewer services for their community. As many of you know, we provide sewer services in well over 40 communities and other entities throughout the county here, and this is just an extension of those services we provide. The reason why it comes to you at this time, the City of Cleveland Heights was formalizing their budget for this year. They were not sure what amount of money they were going to put into this agreement, and that was just recently agreed upon, and $600,000, we'd like to be able to pay We'd like to be able to pass this on first reading suspension, so in turn that we can start the services or continue the services on January 1. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. We'll have our next item.
Okay. I'm here for the next item. Mike Dever with Department of Public Works also. This is seeking authority to acquire right-of-way for the Warner Road Culvert project over the Ohio Canal in the village of Valley View, Ohio. This project, this council gave approval for us to, for public convenience and welfare, is to construct this project in the village of Valley View. This is for temporary easements. This is to give us the authority to acquire temporary easements while we do the construction. And with that being said, we're scheduling construction towards the end of '25 on the project.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
And who would like to speak to this next matter?
Back again. Thank you, Council President Debbie Berry, Chief of Integrated Development. Just going to read my notes here really quick. The Ohio Commission and the U.S. Semi-Quincentennial was formed and announced on March 1 of 2022, March 1, 2022, basically to celebrate the signing of the Declaration of Independence, and the state of Ohio wants to celebrate through a series of programs and projects throughout the state. They are offering a new round of grants that are available to our communities and nonprofits in Cuyahoga County to celebrate the semi-quincentennial. But in order for any of those communities or nonprofits to apply for up to $5,000 in grant funding, Cuyahoga County needs to become a formally designated America 250 Ohio Community by way of council legislation. Unfortunately, we just found out about this, and the deadline to submit a resolution that we are going to accept becoming an Ohio 250 community is December 31, which is why we are asking for you to pass this on first reading suspension. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. What type of grants would these be?
To the chair, to the councilperson? These are different grants that support Ohio as a city, so things like public art, trails, parks, tree planting, community-type grants, but again, only $5,000, but still valuable for some small organizations.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Council President, just for the record, I would like to state that Council Members Conwell, Simon, and Stevens were in attendance for this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So again, one, let me just acknowledge our colleagues, Counselman Shron and Burn and Counselman Stevens. We know these are their final days with us. We're certainly all going to have opportunity to say more in our council meeting later tonight, but I just want to share with everyone that we do have cake in the kitchen. So as we take our time, let's take advantage, have a little something in honor of our colleagues and friends. All right. Is that right? Okay. All right, don't cause a stampede now. All right. So at this moment, our meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene if...